...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
And President Rodriguez is absent. We have a quorum.
Okay, correspondence.
Tonight we have one correspondence from the Cornell Cooperative Extension of Orange County. They would like to thank the city of Middletown for donating 1,500 yards of millings to our Building the Dream Capitol campaign for the education center at the 4-H Park.
Received and filed.
That is all we have for correspondence.
For the good of the city. Look, when you come up, a couple of things. One, please, your name. We have to have your name and where you live. Two, nothing personal. You may not agree, we're all in this room, we all have different ideas, we may not agree on an idea, I have no problems with you attacking the idea, not the person. Let's be respectful of each other. Whoever wants to come up first, please come up to the microphone, state your name, where you live, and then you have four minutes.
Mary Lou Dietrich, Middletown. I'm calling to remind everybody that we are one of the 817 worldwide March for Our Lives marches. We have one here, right here in Middletown. We will be gathering at SUNY Orange. At about 9:00 a.m. we'll start gathering in parking lot one. We're gonna start walking at 10:00 a.m. We're only gonna walk about three-quarters of a mile up to the skateboard park. When you get up to the skateboard park, we're gonna have a rally. We have speakers. I think, don't quote me, but I think eight of the speakers are students, current students. We have some parents. And we're gonna have some information to give out. There'll be voter registration, we're gonna have a voter registration booth. And the topics on, information will be on school safety, gun reform, and civic responsibilities and engagement. So I hope you join us. Here's your chance. You don't have to go to Poughkeepsie, New York City. You can come right here to Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the date on that?
Saturday, the 24th, this Saturday.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Vince Crescenzo, 30 Watkins Avenue, right down the street. I want to thank the mayor, the city, the common council, Chief of Wachu, for the support we got last Wednesday when the students did their demonstration, the 17-minute demonstration. There were 1,200 students that walked around the courtyard, right in front of the building, very orderly, very respectful. When they were finished, they, well, they gave, four students gave speeches, very well received. And when they were finished, they went right back into school and went right back to class. And thank you for your support for this coming demonstration on the 24th. I wanted to talk a little bit about SROs. I know there's, there's been some research done here with the city. You're notifying or getting information from our local legislators. I hope you know that it's not off the table as far as the school district goes. We talk about it. Our superintendent is doing some research this week with some law enforcement. It's a very complicated issue for the, for the, for the school district. One of the things, we had SROs, as you remember, a few years, quite a few years ago, maybe 10 years ago. The problem we have, it works. We understand that it works. But it's the funding, if it's done on a grant, that's soft money, it could last a year, it could last five years, it could, you know, and when it's gone, it's gone. And then people expect that service to stay. And it's a chunk of the budget, depending on how it's funded. It could be $150,000 or 120, whatever, per SRO. And we have seven buildings in, in two municipalities. So how do we do that? Do we have one in the high school? How do the people in the middle school, in the elementary field, the parents feel? So, you know, in the best-case scenario, we'd have one for every building, and we're talking close to $1 million by the time you're done. And that's a big chunk of the budget. But what the community should know, and I hope they know, is that we take safety incredibly seriously. Our buildings, I hate this term, but we have to use it. Our buildings are hardened. We, if you've noticed, the high school, they're really, there are no windows, ground level, that they, well, there are a few, but not in education areas. They start at the second floor, Presidential Park, the secretary and the main office hits a button and every build, every, every lock in the building is, is operated. And there's so many things that are going on, you just can't talk about because you don't want those things to be out in public. And we're looking into other safety features. As we speak, we have people coming in to further harden the buildings. And the other part is that they're constantly working on revamping, studying our safety procedures. So what we've done for two months probably won't happen in the next two months. Because if you remember some of the research that came out of Parkland, he was a former student, so he knew, he knew the, he knew the lay of the land, he knew how to work it, he knew the, you know, if he pulled a fire alarm, people are gonna exit the building. One thing he didn't know, he went up to the second floor, he was gonna shoot down, but they, thank goodness, they had hurricane-reinforced glass, so he couldn't break through it. And he didn't have enough time to break through it. So we're, we're talking. And as I said, the superintendent is talking, he'll be speaking with our chief, with the undersheriff, and what have you. We're gonna come up with something, some kind of a plan. And, you know, rest assured, when your students, your children go into those buildings, their safety is the number-one priority. Education is right there, right close behind it. So again, thank you overall for all the support you've given us, for everything we've done in the last, over the years, and especially what you've done in the last month or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening, everyone. Darren Cross, Second Ward. I'm with the Middletown Little League. I was here at the last board meeting to talk about the parade, how excited I was, and Mother Nature had her own plans. So we moved the parade date to April 14th, with the rain date to the 15th. And if it doesn't happen that weekend, unfortunately, we won't be able to have a parade because of the time crunch to get the games in before All-Stars. And unfortunately, a couple sponsors won't be able to make it, but we still have a number of sponsors that will be able to make it. And we're hoping for it to be a great day. And I would just like to extend, extend my thank you to the common council, to the mayor, the Parks Commission, again, Chris Brinkerhoff, our entire staff, John Bianchi and his Parks staff, and the Police Department. Everybody that I've reached out to has been very accommodating, and it's been a pleasure to work with everybody. And also, if there's any new parents watching or listening to the meeting, we have a Facebook page. Please like our page. That has all the updates and newsletter on it, and that would bring everybody up to date with what we're doing. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Merritt Winter, 121 Lake Avenue. To the members of the common council and to the viewers watching, watching on Channel 20. My name is Merritt Winter. I'm a past chief of the Middletown Fire Department, and I currently chair the Recruiting Committee for the Middletown Fire Department. Just as background information, the Middletown Fire Department is a combination department. That means our fire drivers are city employees, while our chiefs, company officers, and firefighters are all unpaid volunteers. Three of our seven volunteer fire companies were originally organized in 1859. Some members of the seven companies serve as separate fire police unit to control access to incident scenes. It's important for the public to know that the existing combination system saves Middletown taxpayers significant amounts of money each and every year. The Recruiting Committee recently held a reorganization meeting to reinvigorate efforts to locate new volunteers. The Recruiting Committee will be holding a demonstration at Central Fire Station on Saturday, April 28th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in cooperation with the statewide Recruit New York program by the Firefighters Association of the State of New York, or FASD. You must be 16 or older to apply for membership. Members who are 16 or 17 years old are junior firefighters who can train but cannot enter a building, structure, or fire until they turn 18. You can volunteer for many fire department functions. Social members do not fight fire but assist at fundraising and other activities. Fire police control traffic and secure fire scenes for investigators. Exterior firefighters do not enter burning structures but assist in many ways outside. And interior firefighters actively suppress the fire. Each function depends on the interest and capability of the individual plus the training level, level, David Chi, uh, com, excuse me, accomplished. All training is free, requiring only your time to attend. Certificates of accomplishment are awarded for each course passed. Come to our recruiting demonstration on April 28th and talk to our firefighters. Bring the kids, too. Kids love fire trucks. This is a plea for anyone who may be interested in becoming a volunteer firefighter to contact the Middletown Fire Department for more information. Associate with great people, learn new skills, and help your neighbors all at the same time. Call Chief Lewis's office at 344-5003 or my phone at 342-3465, both at answering machines. We will call you back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address?
Bob Dietrich, Chestnut Street. This is an anniversary for me. Forty-year resident this year of Middletown. Okay? I live here because I want to, okay? I could probably live anywhere in the county, or maybe in the, in the nation that I want to. Okay? Why the city? Well, first, as we all know, it has great services. Great DPW. We never have to worry about garbage or clean streets. A great Recreation and Parks Department. They both have great commissioners and fantastic staffs. We're probably gonna have to be using those DPW union workers tomorrow, as hopefully we get through our last storm of the season. I could walk to the library. I could walk to restaurants. I could walk to cafes, to the bank. I could walk to my primary care physician. I could walk to my dentist. Okay? Let's see you do that somewhere else. Not in Orange County, anyway. It has a diverse population, and it welcomes them. As the chief pointed out last week, it has a, it is safe and has a committed police force, which is important to me, coming from a family that had three captains in the last generation. The schools offer a great product for those who want to take advantage of it. Okay? And now, there's a movement to improve the downtown. When I moved here, it was quite different than it is now. I think at a meeting at the Paramount last year, we probably won't see that again, but we'll see something, see something different. Redevelopment on the community campus, and as we saw, I think it was two weeks ago, it's going to start a new, cutting-edge businesses up on the old Horton campus. I bring this up because on March 8th, which was International Women's Day, I went to a meeting at the town of Waywayanda. By the way, that night, there are many great Orange County environmental heroines there for International Women's Day. I found two problems at that meeting. Okay? One is that the town supervisor was not there. He was a no-show. I don't know why. And so he didn't get to see his detractors. We've talked very much in these meetings about CPV, and that's what most of the people were there for. And there was no one, like I'm sure most of you would step up, to take his place. No one to explain why they made the decision that they did. Okay? That doesn't happen in Middletown either. Okay? As we all know. Our leaders and our leader does not back down from adversity and will always explain and defend decisions that are made by this city. Okay? As we also saw last week, he may sometimes do so even when you agree with him. So, I know. The, the second thing was that I became quite irritated at the meeting because people who agreed with me on that one issue, CPV.
Bob, you gotta, you're gonna have to wrap it up shortly.
Okay. Tried to disparage Middletown for no reason. There was no reason to do it. People were using words like "those people," "becoming like Middletown." Okay? I'm sorry. They would be lucky to be like Middletown, to have all the services that we have. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to address this council? All right. Remarks of Department Head. Economic Development. Ms. Bruni?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we had a meeting of the Community Development Agency where our annual report and audit was approved to submit to the state by the end of this month. Also, our Community Development, CDBG program, our annual report, performance report is out for review right now. It's online. Attendance has been growing at the Paramount. We've had a successful St. Patrick's Day show on Saturday, this past Saturday. And this Friday, don't forget, the Oak Ridge Boys will be in town, and sales are really, the tickets are really selling real fast. So go online or give the box office a shout and get your tickets for a great show on Friday. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions? Thank you, Mary. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening. We're just gonna be brief tonight. I just wanna ask the people to be careful tonight and tomorrow because we're expecting quite a bit of snow. And please remember, two inches and above, you're not allowed to park on city streets, to allow our men to do the plowing, and to keep the roads open and clear for everyone. And also, please to try to uncover or shovel from around the fire hydrants as much as you can. We appreciate that because we don't have enough people to go around and expose the fire hydrants after, especially, you know, eight inches of snow, six inches of snow, because the plows will be adding some more when they clear the street. So please help us out with the fire hydrants and stay off the road as much as you can. And of course, the mayor will be issuing any emergency alerts on as need basis, on Channel 20, and on our website and other means. And the other, Black Dirt Sewer, that's the, again, the sewer line from, from the school, the new school, all the way to Manhattan Avenue. The work has started. They have installed most of the piles required. It's a very expensive sewer line and requires to be, most of it is gonna be installed over piles because of the kind of soil it's gonna be constructed in. That work is, is going very well so far, and is on target. The roundabout, you will see activities in James P. Kelly Way and County Route 78. And that work has started also. They've been doing some surveying work and stakeout, and now the actual construction work, work will be starting. So again, just be careful, please, in that area and follow. Watch out for, for the working men in there. I know many people, they go speeding in there. The Police Department will be over there to enforce the speed and to make sure that workers are safe in that area. So please keep that in mind. Follow the detour sign and just be, be patient. And I know many, many of the people using that area will be commuters, you know, from outside of town. But whoever, whoever is watching this, please just be careful. Allow them in the time to rebuild our roads and our, and the roundabout for us so we can enjoy it afterwards. We have a couple of resolutions in here before you tonight. One for the courthouse in there. I don't know if you're gonna be talking about the courthouse. Yeah. So, so basically, unfortunately, the architect that we had engaged the services of for redesigning the federal courthouse and move the city court from, from where it's, it is at this time, where it is located now, next to City Hall, over to the federal courthouse, we did not, did not go too well. So we have, tonight you'll be voting to hire another architecture slash engineering firm to replace the previous firm, to take over the project and move it forward. Because it's just sat there stagnant for some time, and the mayor wants to move it forward. So that will be the first resolution. The other resolution, you already approved the engineer for redesign of 20-inch water main from the water treatment plant all the way down to Manhattan Avenue. That's a priority, important project for us. We have half a million dollar grant on that project. So tonight you'll be approving the, we're requesting that you approve the, making the money available for the engineers so we can start paying them and the project can move forward. That's the 20-inch water line. Tonight, the mayor has signed that Maple Avenue drainage project. So that's another just over a million-dollar project. And then he's waiting to sign the contract for the West Main Manhattan Brook Project 2. Hopefully, we can sign it, the mayor can sign it tomorrow or the day after. Because the rush is to try to get the trees down before the end of this month because of the long ear bats in there. It's, there's a restriction about when you can take the, the trees down. So that's the rush for it. And I think I covered as little as I want to say tonight, if you have any questions for me.
Commissioner, Council President Rodriguez texted me and he asked me if you'd give a status on the New York Rising project for spring.
Yeah. In New York Rising, we are still, you know, the engineers, NV5, they are still working, they are still working on gathering the required information for this, for this project and exploring different alternatives, to put it for, for our consideration. And in August, in August 2018, the schedule is, we're gonna be selecting the city and New York Rising Committee will be selecting the projects that are to move forward for design. That's in August 2018. And we expect to start construction in September 2019. And all funds should be spent by September 2022. So we are, we have plenty of time, and we are within schedule, and the project is moving along. It's just, it's a tremendous, tremendous amount of information they had to gather about the Manhattan Brook and the Draper Brook and all the investigation underground and sending cameras and so on. So that's where we are with that.
Any other questions for the Commissioner?
Commissioner, we had a come up at our constituents' meeting the other night. While we're replacing the streetlights, you'd still like people to call in any outages that they see on current ones, correct?
Yes. And that will be the responsibility, absolutely. That will be the responsibility of the city of Middletown. You no longer have to or can report it to Orange and Rockland website. It will have to be coming to DPW. So just call us in there and we'll try to address them as fast as we can. Because now the contractors are going to replace them, to replace the conventional one with LED lights. And then we will go after the ones that are out.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Jacob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fire Chief.
Good evening, everybody. We've represented tonight. He's available. But no report for anything you guys want me to take back? I'll take it back. We good?
Any questions for the Fire Chief? Thank you very much. Treasurer, Mr. Parrish.
I have nothing this evening, unless anybody has any question.
Any questions for the Treasurer? Thank you. Police Chief.
Good evening. Just a couple quick notes pertaining to staffing. The end of this month, and actually, this Friday, is Officer Jamie Johnson's last day with the department. She's retiring after 20 years of dedicated service. I'd also like to just bring to attention that the Police Commission was gracious enough to hire two additional police officers this past week. Both of them are Middletown High School graduates. One is currently a resident of the city, and one is just outside of the city. Jeff, or Joseph Latimer and Marcelo Cristopiano. We welcome them aboard. And this Friday, we have our graduation for our two recruits that have spent the last 22 weeks in the police academy, being vigorously trained. And they will be on the street as of next week. Other than that, any questions?
Any questions for the Chief? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you for the Town Hall Forum that you held last week. I, I thought it was excellent. And I know sometime you plan to do it again, but I thank everybody who turned out. I thought it was very well done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Chief, thank you. Corporation Counsel.
Nothing this evening unless there are any questions.
Any questions for the Corporation Counsel? Thank you. City Clerk.
Today, we added some new, the recycling changes that we added, it's on the website now. The, the new dates and the new times, or not, new dates are all on there on the website. DPW sent them down to me, so we updated them all today. So the public will know that you guys voted last time to change that, so that everything is on there for that. And that's all I have right now.
Any questions? Thank you. Public hearings and grievances.
Tonight, we have one public hearing. It's a public hearing on addition to the zoning code for student housing. And I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 20th, on or near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, Second Floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed amendment to the zoning code, Section 475 zoning, Section 475-35, Borders in Residential Districts and Dwellings, Boarding Houses, to add the following. Notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, boarding houses for college students are hereby permitted, subject to Planning Board approval, in all R1, R2, OR2, SR3A, SR3B, C1A, C3A, and DMU zoning districts. A full copy of the proposed addition to the zoning code was available in the City Clerk's office, Room 12, 16 James Street, Middleton, New York, and on the city website. And in all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity either for or against a proposed addition to the code. And this is by order of the Common Council. And it was signed John Namcek, Clerk of the Common Council. It was published in the Times Held Record on March 12th and March 13th, and on the city website. Also, too, with this, this did affect the entire city, so this did have to go to the county for approval. And I still have not received it. They still have 30 days. I think they still have a week yet. So there will be no resolution for that tonight. We, but we will have the public hearing.
Public hearing is open. Anyone from the public like to speak? Anyone from council? Public hearing is closed. Petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Remarks of Alderman.
You made me pause for a second.
I know. I couldn't believe it.
I was actually thinking about not speaking at all tonight because you're acting chairman, but I don't want to put myself in that position. But the, my friend Robert Dietrich raised a couple of good points. And about the, I think he was referring to our little give-and-take at the chief's town hall meeting regarding some negative comments that I thought were being made about the city. But when he pivoted to the Waywayanda meeting, I did watch the meeting. And there were a lot of negative comments that came out of that meeting from the people who attended regarding, is Waywayanda gonna turn into Newburgh and Middletown? I felt at that time that the Protect Orange group has an obligation to, they have a mission. I understand their mission is not just CPV. They have a mission to protect the environment countywide, and, and they're, they're anti-Legal Land. They're, they're against a lot of things. I would hope that they would be for some decency in the discourse that goes on in the public hearings, that they are encouraging people to attend. One lady on Kirby Town Road, and I watched it over a second time, just to be sure, she, and I might have mentioned it the last meeting, but she stated that she had two $300,000 homes on Kirby Town Road, and that she felt now they're gonna be worth about $125,000 each. But then she made the comment that only people from Newburgh and Middletown will be able to live in a house like that. That is such a bigoted statement, that it can't go unchallenged by not only us, but by the organization Protect Orange, now Michael Sussman. They have a responsibility to disavow those types of comments at these public hearings. Bob heard the same thing. And I, and I understand there were other comments made, that people from Middletown are not gonna be in the Middletown, are the menacing school district. What does that mean, people from Middletown? You know, are we like bad people, or, or is there something different that they mean by comments like that? So we've listened to a lot of what Protect Orange, Mr. Martens and all these other folks that have come here, we've listened respectfully. My message to them now is to tone it down to a My message to them now is to tone it down to a point where we can have disagreement or agreement. We can have confrontation about issues and discussion about issues, about different environmental issues around the county or around the Middletown region. But they now need to speak out as an organization and disavow those types of comments and encourage the people who are attending these public hearings, like meetings here in Middletown or public comment periods, to refrain from making those types of bigoted comments. So I'm calling on them publicly to do something in that area, and I hope they do so immediately. Mr. Sussman has a reputation in the public, in the area of civil rights, so I think he should be very understanding of the, and if he takes the time to watch the comments, that he'll be, should be very understanding that they're not only hurtful to us as a community, but they're hurtful to a certain population in our community that I believe was targeted by those comments. So hopefully, they will do so and they will, and rise to the occasion. In regards to CPV, I had a meeting this afternoon, myself and Jacob, and following that meeting, I invited Sparrow and Alderman Tobin and Alderman Green to meet with CPV because they were not part of the original process, just in case they had questions. They had a lot of detailed questions of CPV. So I want to thank the two of you for, for coming to the meeting and airing your concerns with them. We are ready to release the report from CDM, which I will do tomorrow. Hopefully, I will have copies for all of you tonight. I do have them in my office. And it's just the minutes of the, the official minutes of the meeting that we had with CDM and DEC. So we'll give the council those copies and then hopefully release them the next day or so to the public. CPV, as you know, is not operating at this point, and they did once again reaffirm the position that they will be operating on gas. And you guys can reaffirm that. So, so our, our biggest concern is the emissions and, and that's what we're going to continue to monitor. We have not received the results of the air emission test back from the DEC. Once we do, we will make them public. So we're going to continue to be very transparent. We're going to continue to retain the services of CDM as we move forward, and we will make those air results public as, as they come available. The, the chief, I wanted to thank him, as Mr. Alderman Kleiner did, for the town hall meeting. I thought it was very well done. People did have some good questions and, and hopefully it'll be more frequent than not just a one-time event. I think he assured the public that he's willing to do that, and I think based on the response that we had, that hopefully he's encouraged to repeat that, and he did state that that night. At 7:34 tonight, a Nixle notification went out. So if you're signed up for Nixle, you know about the storm, you know about the, the city guidelines on removing your cars from public streets. We're trying to encourage all Middletown residents at the very least, or anyone who does business in the Middletown area. You can sign up for the, for the system, 888-777, and text Middletown with a capital M, and you'll get the type of reports about snow removal. If we do declare an emergency, you'll get it immediately. And so if your car is on the street, you will be subject to towing. So there's no excuse for not getting the information that we're willing to put out because we'll also do a phone call and other forms of communication. So sign up as soon as you can. We had a meeting today with the county regarding the Heritage Trail, and we felt it was a productive meeting. We had some updates. They're ready to go out to bid. There's still a issue of the culvert is still not resolved, but we, we believe that we have a solution that we've all agreed upon, and we're going to be meeting hopefully in the next day or two to resolve that. Their planned date to go out to bid with the trail is the next week or two. I'm not exactly sure on the date, but they did say that they are ready to, ready to bid the project. And I think that's all I have for this evening unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Report, yeah, remark, remarks. Remarks for Alderman. Alderman Burr, I'll give you an opportunity to go first.
Well, thank you, Mr.
You're welcome.
President.
Do I owe you anything?
I was on the CDA audit committed tonight. I want to thank Don, Maria, and Patty for a fine job. The word was no deficiencies, and I want to thank you. And Wednesday night is garbage night on this, in Wednesday garbage night, first ward. If you can with the snow, please bring your cans in off the thing so the snow plows won't plow them off. We've lost quite a few. Thank you.
Alderman, Jean-François.
Jean-François. Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the commissioner for starting the project with James P. Callaway. I know this project has been on the table just as long as the Heritage Trail started, so I'm glad to see it coming to fruition. And also, our fourth ward constituents' meeting is scheduled for April 7th at 10:00 a.m. in this chamber. Please join us. Mr. Alderman Tobin and I will be here, so please join us. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you, Acting President Massey. I want to wish everyone a happy spring. We're also glad winter is over. End that note, spring cleanup, and Mr. Massey said I would remind everyone, and I will again, and for the next couple of meetings, but our citywide spring cleanup is April 21st. And, you know, get your friends and neighbors and everyone. Sue says we want a record turnout this year, so we would like to see that. The rain date, by the way, is the 22nd, and at this point, I might say the snow date's the 22nd because that's the way it's been going this year. This Saturday, as you know, this is the March for Our Lives, and as Mary Lou Dietrich said, that begins at 9:00 at Lot 1 at the college. If you don't know which one that is, that's the one at Wayway On the, in Grandview. And it's a big lot and hoping for a very good event. And I'm looking forward to listening to what the students have to say because they've just been amazing and, and that should definitely be worth going to. SROs not only protect our schools, but when we had the SROs here in Middletown, I like to point out that they were very proactive. They got to know the students and the students got to know them. So a lot of things were prevented before they could get to a trouble stage. And, you know, again, that should be, I think, separate from the cap because I don't see any way you can do it otherwise. And as Mr. Crescendo says, the grant money is good and, you know, we thank Assemblywoman Gunther. She's given us grant money before for SOR, SROs in the schools, but the grants do run out and then the officers are not there and, and it leaves a void, so. Comment on, I also went to the Wayway On the Town Board meeting. Mr. Rosano was not there. They would not say why he wasn't there. They would not say where he was. I know we were told originally that CPV would keep our O and R and our electric rates down. I don't see that, and I don't see that we're going to get any local benefit from it. But the, some of the points made were, were really stunning in that, you know, the town set themselves up as lead agency. And instead of having the DEC, their disaster plan, they were asked again and again, what's your disaster plan? Well, we have one, but we can't tell you. It's a secret. You know, this is a five-mile radius. Back, back when the Wayway On the Six were in court, Mr. Sussman and others brought up about the ammonia tank and as a, as a potential immediate imminent threat. And they said, well, there's no ammonia in it now, so it's not a threat. Well, I think that's not the case now. Now, I think the ammonia is in it or will be in it, and I think that they should take their own first responders and anyone involved and any emergency personnel, and they should all be very familiar with the plant, my understanding, and I apologize if it's wrong, but is that they have not done that. Again, 30 days to run on fuel oil, but that's not 30 days, that's the lawyer's 30 days. That's 720 hours. So that's four hours this day, three hours that day. You could go all year that way. Also, I just want to mention because when I read my comments the last time, the mayor had gotten up and responded to what I said, and I had, I think he missed part of what I said because I read the part about emailing Mr. Sussman, being concerned about monitoring because as I follow this project over the years, there's permits and there's limits, but I never saw provisions for monitoring. So I asked him if he knew, and he forwarded the email to Pramila Malik and others, if anyone knew of what the provisions for monitoring were. That was my question. My concern with environmental justice and my concern with methane and my concern with who's actually watching the permits, that comment that I read was not something I sent to Mr. Sussman. That was my official comment on the DEC's public comment line that they had until August, beginning of August last year. So that was my official submission to the DEC. I did go to all those meetings in the beginning, and we didn't just go for CPV, we went for Brookfield. It's a nice name, isn't it? Brook and Field. It's an auto-crushing plant that was proposed for Dulson Town Road, right off adjacent to where the Heritage Trail is going to grow, going to go. And I, I don't know what's happened to that project, but that was a major concern because that's one of the dirtiest industries you could conceive of. And so it was Brookfield and CPV both. So we went to meetings and spoke up at the town board and the planning board about CPV and Brookfield as projects that we didn't think were appropriate for this area of the county. So I did do that, and I'm sorry if it led to any confusion, but those were my two remarks. So, thank you.
Alderman, frank machine.
Good evening. You know, I sat on that side of the room. I had to follow Alderman Johnson. Now I sit here and I have to follow Jerry Kleiner. I need a new seat next time.
It's a penance.
Like somewhere over there. First, I just want to mention that next Tuesday, there'll be a third ward meeting. That's March 27th, at 7:00 p.m. right here in this room or next door, depending on our crowd. The March for Our Lives, I'd really like to encourage everyone who is available to attend this event. That being said, I have to say that I will be unable to attend the event because once again, I'm out of town at a swim meet, which appears to be my, my life structure these days. But I, I did want to be there. I'm upset that I'm not, but if, if you are here and you are able, you should be, I think Middletown showing up in numbers would be outstanding for something like this. This is our kids, these are, this is our community, and this is our family. So I hope that our turnout will be huge and the weather will be cooperative. Speaking of weather, I hope everyone stays safe, and this is the last of the snow that we see till Christmas. That would be great. And I'd like to thank our DPW and Parks and everyone who keeps our roads clear in advance for all their hard work and what they do to keep us safe day to day. I'll leave it at that since Alderman Kleiner handled everything else.
Alderman Johnson.
Couple of things, I want to join the others in saying that the chief is inspirational and appreciated that town meeting. As far as the CPV meeting, lots, lots to digest. Like Mr. Dietrich, I've been here a while. I came here 35 years ago voluntarily. My children all went through the Middletown schools from kindergarten to graduation. They turned out fairly well considering who their dad is, but that's good. Middletown, we've often taken it on the chin. We have a variety of reasons over the last 30 to 40 years. We can rise above it. We're doing what we're doing. We're doing well. And if others don't want to listen to what we have to say, I think we can move on and move upward. There's a couple of things that are happening on legislative committee. There's a few things on tonight's agenda that bear fruition to the work we deliberated about. Our next meeting will be April 17th. We'll continue to do our work and knock out the punch list. Lastly, a couple of issues that brought Cornell Cooperative Extension to the meeting tonight, just by way of disclosure, I'm on the board of directors. I currently serve as the vice president, but I certainly want to thank Ms. Joyce and the board, thanking the city for the Millings. It really is a big step up for our project. We appreciate it. And also, there's a resolution this evening to close roads on April 7th. That is a Cornell Cooperative event, and of course, we're headquartered right there at Community Campus, and the organization appreciates that. Thank you.
Alderman Green.
Thank you. I also want to echo, thank you, chief, for the town hall. It was very nice, very well attended. I was fortunate enough to be at the Paramount on Friday, or Friday or Saturday evening for the Young Islanders. They were great. If you haven't been to the Paramount for any reason, I suggest you definitely go. You'll see why we all love it. Speaking of loving things in Middletown, when I ran, I was often asked why I was running for office, and I said it was to move Middletown forward. And I will agree with pretty much everyone who's spoken tonight, especially Dr. Johnson, that regardless of what people say, it's not just moving forward in the way we build and the great things happening, but moving forward beyond any of the things people have to say. You know, there will always be people who will talk down or have some comment to say, and, you know, we'll just rise above it and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
Nothing this evening.
You get a star.
Be still, my heart. Unfinished business.
Nothing this evening.
New business.
Hey, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Barton and Ludist for engineering services on the new Middletown courthouse. The total cost is $173,500.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, to approve the mayor to sign the agreement with PERMA covering workers' compensation for volunteer firefighters.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green, to approve the new agreement with Orange Bank and Trust and to authorize the mayor to sign the necessary paperwork.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to approve the mayor to sign any and all documents required pertaining to the all Dancy grants for the Worworths Rail Trail Commons Project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, to amend the city code for penalty definitions for violations of snow removal provisions.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Questions? Roll. Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Green, to approve the closing of streets in the community campus on Saturday, April 7th, 2018, from 9:45 till 12:00 noon, for a 5K run walk.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Green. Any questions? Alderman Kleiner?
Yes, we, we had some question about this, because we haven't actually dedicated the streets. Is there any opinion on that? Jacob or Rich, Mr. Gertens?
That's the closing of the community campus, the streets in the community campus.
We're using the streets.
What's that?
We're using them now. They haven't officially been dedicated, but we're using them.
So, okay.
So, if you don't want to do it, don't do it.
No, that's, that's fine if we can. I just want to make sure it's.
If we can use them, we can close them.
We can close them. Okay, thank you.
Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green, to authorize the closing of streets for the Middletown Little League Parade on Saturday, April 14th, at 10:00 a.m., with a rain date of Sunday, April 15th.
Resolution, I think, sponsored by Alderman Kleiner? Okay. Seconded by Alderman Ram Kassoon?
For our streets.
Any questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin, to approve the issuance of $557,000 in serial bonds to pay the cost of engineering design costs in connection with the water improvements for the city.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to close any and all streets for the St. Joseph's Church to have their outdoor stations of the cross procession on Friday, March 30th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Tobin, to provide road millings to the Wack Hill Cemetery at no cost as request authorized by the Commissioner of Public Works.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, to authorize the use of the City of Middletown stage for the Hudson Valley Honor Flight for the Veterans Concert on Saturday, July 28th, at the Historic Track in Goshen.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to close all of Union Street from Franklin to Linden Avenue for the March for Life on Saturday, March 24th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Questions? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That's all for new business.
Local laws?
Nothing this evening.
Audit?
Mr. Chairman, move the accounts to be audited, the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, before we adjourn, everyone with the impending storm, please be very careful out there. Be cognizant of our DPW workers, and thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.